First thing up, subdivisions not ANRs. We do not have any as far as I can see. So the next subject is public hearings. We do have one. It is to further amend the 1985 zoning ordinances as amended by adding a new line 114A to Section 5.1 Table of Use Regulations prohibiting virtual currency kiosks in all zoning districts.
Good evening, Chairman. Good to see everybody. Mark Salvati for the City of Woburn. This is a zoning change sponsored by President Dillon to prohibit all what we call virtual kiosks. Basically, what they're doing is putting up kiosks in gas stations or convenience stores wherein people would deposit money to supposedly buy Bitcoin, but a lot of it is becoming a scam. And I'm going to let Captain Driscoll here speak to the problem more succinctly, if that's okay with you. Dan Driscoll?
Good evening. Dan Driscoll, captain with Woburn Police. I was the one that kind of led this along with Mark Salvati here and a few others. Attempted to try to ban these in the City of Woburn at the police department just alone in 2024 and 2025. And these are the only reported cases, which a lot of the times with these fraudulent schemes, a lot of people are too embarrassed to report to police. So I'm not sure the percentage of what we get, but we're looking at well over 1.3, 1.4 million dollars in fraudulent schemes taken from members, people of the City of Woburn. Mostly, it is the elderly. We do have a few that, depending on what the scheme is, you know, it affects everybody. But again, just in 2024 and 2025 alone, we're looking, we're getting to the 1.5 million dollar mark. Just to give a little background on the cryptocurrencies and the purpose of them, my opinion, if you're going to buy cryptocurrency, you're going to do it online or another way where there are zero percent fees. These crypto ATMs or kiosks, their rake, the company alone, the ones that actually put them in the convenience stores and gas stations, they take anywhere from 10 to 12% of your money right off the bat before it gets exchanged for some type of coin. Again, no reasonable person other than convenience or maybe not wanting to be known, the person that exchanges the money. There's no reason to go into these and use these where you can do it online or other means for zero percent. They also take network fees during these transactions and the money adds up. I haven't come across one person in the City of Woburn that told me they use these Bitcoin ATMs for the purpose of exchanging USD into Bitcoin. Again, it would, it would all be done by different means, typically online. You can do it really anywhere now, any, any platform. Just up here to field any questions you may have regarding this.
Captain Driscoll, just if it wouldn't, isn't it take a long time? Could you explain how the scam works? Like what it is that people get scammed on with these machines?
There's countless amounts of schemes. So you could get a call yourself and say just, I mean, everyone's heard of this one, but a grandchild is in jail in Florida and the only way to get him out is to provide funds to whatever agency that is claiming they're calling. Go down the local ATM, they'll give you an address because you can look these up online. They'll, they'll show you where they are. Go down to say 111 Main Street, the DB Mart or the Minmart Exchange, you know, $3,000 USD into Bitcoin, send it to us that way because we're in Florida. And just like that, within seconds, it's out of the country. It's gone. And then they'll just keep asking for more and more money over time. We have one from 2024 that one individual, 1.1 million dollars. And that happened over a six-month period where they just, again, they, they find people that, you know, the elderly, and they just keep asking for more and more and more, and they believe it, unfortunately.
So you'd have to go down to these machines?
Physically have to, yes.
Take the Bitcoin?
So you don't take, so Bitcoin is, it's, it's, they put it in a digital, like a virtual wallet. Okay. So you're going to go down, you're going to physically go to your Santander, take out $10,000. You'll go down to these crypto ATMs, you'll physically feed that USD into it. They'll give you another wallet or it's called a receiving wallet, which is a number where that money will go to. So you're giving it to someone virtually and that Bitcoin is now in that other person's wallet. And then instantly they'll exchange, it's called wallet hopping. They'll then exchange that to another wallet, another wallet, another wallet. And it's, it's virtually untraceable for the police department and even the feds. They, you know, there's cases that they've been successful with, but once it goes in that machine, there is, it's gone. It's, it could be in another country. We can know, we, we're advised not to seize these machines as well. We know the money's in there, but we can't seize them because then we'd be taking the money from the company that owns these machines when the money's already gone in another country, possibly being exchanged for another currency in that, in that country.
Any other questions?
So is there any legitimate reason to have those machines?
So in my, my opinion, no, but yes, I mean, it's convenience, right? If people don't want to have a bank account associated with a cryptocurrency wallet to exchange US funds to Bitcoin, I guess you could make an argument to that, but I'd say that's the only two is convenience, which the argument against that is you can do it from, you can do it from your home on a computer. So when they say this is convenient, it's truly not.
Sort of pushing it like an ATM. We see ATMs everywhere. They're in the grocery stores.
They look like one of those too. Yep. So it's a, it's a standalone kiosk. It's about this tall, this wide. You feed money into it. I can't see a legitimate purpose for them when you can, if you're looking for investment into Bitcoin, which a lot of people do these days, that's fine, but those people will do it online on a platform where there's no, there's no rape, there's no percentage taken from you, just like if you're going to buy a stock these days. It can be done that way as well.
So let's just say it's a convenience store. They pay a fee to the convenience store to have their machine put in, but the convenience store has no responsibility for the activity of that machine?
Correct. And they're putting them at the very front of the convenience stores. If you go right down to the one down here at the corner Franklin and you walk in, it's the first thing you're going to see on the left. I mean, they're just designed, I know other departments and places had said, hey, just put them at the back at least, give them a chance to, you know, people to tell them not to put the money into it, but they put them at the front. They make it very easy. It's gotten so bad that these companies now have to put a disclaimer on it. And it says, if you're on the phone with, whatever the disclaimers are, basically saying there's a lot of fraud that, that happens with these machines, to think twice. But unfortunately, it still happens. We're a small city.
Thank you, Captain.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. This is a-
I would just add that other cities have already banned them. Gloucester has already done it. Wallthen is in the process. And the state is starting to establish the ban. I talked to the DA and they told me that that's in the works as well. So it's happening.
The store already has a crypto ATM. This-
It's going to turn into a zoning violation. So it'll be enforced that way. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, this is a public hearing. So if anybody would like to come up to speak in for or against this amendment, please do so now. There should be a sheet of paper up there for you to sign in and please state your name and address when you come up.
Good evening, everyone. Jeff Dillon, Woburn City Council President, Wadri, City Councillor. I had previously met with Woburn PD and Attorney Salvati over this, and they explained what was going on. It seems pretty clear cut that there is no purpose for these machines shot off scamming our elderly and people that fall for the scam. Our elderly has to be protected, and I feel it's our duty to make sure that we give the Woburn PD every resource possible to make that happen. They're busy enough without worrying about this. And it's easy to fall for these scams. My wife recently retired and she went through the social security. And I'm home and I get a call and the home phone number. This is social security from Maryland, and we need some information. I was smart enough to realize that social security doesn't call you. They mail out letters. So I hung up after an unpleasant exchange, shall we say. But they're figuring out a different way to scam every day. And I think we've heard the testimony, how dangerous and how bad it is out there. People just don't have the knowledge to be aware of this. So I strongly support removing these from our city and making sure that we do everything we can to protect the people that we're here to protect. Thank you very much.
Good evening. John Hesslin, 36 Clinton Street in Woburn. And I'm just, I'm here to support it as well. I don't see much, I'm not a big fan of crypto in general, but in this particular case, I don't see any real legitimate need for these to be, I'm generally against bans also, but ban these is perfectly fine by me. They just seem to facilitate nefarious behavior. So, I mean, even in the convenient part, you, you go there so you don't connect your bank account to the virtual wallet. That should send up red flags to everyone as well. So, so I want to support the effort to ban it. Thank you.
Who else?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Dave to close the public hearing. Second by Jim. All those in favor? Six, zero passes. Discussion. No discussion. Okay. Do I have a motion by anybody?
The amendment is-
Motion to send a favorable recommendation to the city council to approve the amendment. Second, Rob, all those in favor? Six, zero carries. Okay, next, definitive subdivision status review. Cliffside Terrace establishes surety. Mr. Director?
Okay. Since sending out the report for this meeting on this subdivision, I had a chance to talk to the project manager who's here this evening. Everything is pretty much under control at this point in time. They have contracted with Main Blasting, which is one of the premier blasting companies, one of the last ones left actually doing work in this region. The blasting that is, that will take place in this subdivision will probably occur later in the winter, but a complete assessment has to be done first by the blasting company of all the abutting properties. So that aspect of the subdivision is being planned for at this point in time. Also, the architect for the proposed six houses, the architect is working on the design of each of these houses relative to determining what level of blasting will occur for each one of the lots that's proposed. As far as the surety is concerned, we won't have a need to deal with the surety for the subdivision until such time as the roadway is completed up to binder grade. So at that time, the utilities will be in, the road will be up to binder grade, and that'll be the period of time that they'll be applying for building permits for the lots. So once it's up to binder grade, the roadway, the utilities are in, then we'll deal with the surety issue. That's the most up to date. We're going to have a pre-construction meeting, probably the first week in December, and that'll involve the DPW superintendent, city engineer, police fire, and probably a couple of other staff members also, just to make sure everybody's on the same page when it comes to the blasting that'll take place, the removal of the ledge that's going to have to be removed from the site, and all the other aspects of construction for the subdivision. So that's the up to date. We don't have to deal with the surety at this point.
Any questions of the director on that? Kevin?
Was his roots established when they pull off the rock? Which way the trucks are going? Are they going to go back down Garfield or hopefully not go through the neighborhood?
Right. Yeah, to the extent possible. I mean, there's, when this starts in the removal of the ledge from the site, you know, there's going to be a substantial amount of truck traffic, you know, Monday through Friday. But, you know, they'll be going on Garfield to Green Street.
Oh, that'll be going that way?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dave?
And unlike that North Woburn thing, there'll be no crushing of the rock. It'll just be hauled away, right?
Yeah. You know, there'll have to be a certain amount of processing relative to shrinking the boulders down to transportable size, but yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it's nothing on scale as that project.
I get it, but if you live in the neighborhood, it is.
Yeah.
Right?
I visited the site the other day. The trees in the areas of the lot in the right-of-way, those have all been cleared. I would, you know, invite anybody to go up and, you know, take a look at the site. It's properly fenced off at this point in time. There's no activity going on, on the property at this point.
Thank you.
All set, Dave? All right. Moving right along, Plenary Board Directors' update.
Yes. Well, before we get to that, you want to, we're going to have the presentation by our housing production.
It's just underpinning-
Yeah, okay. Doing a good job too. Keeping, keeping me in line.
That means a lot. All right. So we're going to have a presentation from Jen Goldson. Chapter two of the-
Yeah. Hi, nice to see everyone again.
See you.
Casey's just getting the presentation up on the screen there.
Kaboom.
Well, since I last saw you, you could see that we've been very busy writing strategies and goals, so we wanted to get your feedback on those. We're going- We're going to be going to the city council next month and so we'd love to modify any that you feel need modifying or if there's something missing to add something in. But now that we've got the presentation up, I'll go ahead and give that to you. But you all got the document in your packets, I believe, already, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. So chapter two is really what we wanted you to look at, the rest you have seen before. And, and what we'll talk about are those five-year goals and then the strategies and then next steps. So Lucy and I have been working closely, Lucy's here, right there, on this, on this project and, and we've really had an interesting time delving into all the data that you saw last time, I think that was last month or maybe it was September. And, and since then, we've been doing a lot of interviews and, and we also met with the city council a few weeks ago to present the data portion of it as well and got some good discussion going there. And now, I'll just remind you, you know a lot of this, but, but I know it's being recorded so it's always helpful to let folks know at home if they're watching and didn't see the earlier one, that the housing production plan is really providing Woburn with a way to stay above that 10% safe harbor that you've already achieved. It's also a way to hear from community members and so that's why we did so many interviews and had the forum a couple of months ago as well to try to get some more input into what do you want to see for the next five years in terms of policies and initiatives that the city can undertake. And the, the plan is really trying to look at, well, what pace and type of future growth is Woburn trying to encourage, incentivize, and where would that be? And then in this plan that you'll see, that you've gotten in your packet and that I'll present tonight, we have a bunch of ideas for future policies that include zoning ideas as well as local initiatives in addition to capacity ideas. So we've gone through these eight stages of the process where we started out just trying to understand what's going on in Woburn and what you've been doing the last, well, I think your last plan was 2017 really since then. Then we started to do ideating and trying to get ideas for what kind of strategies and goals are most appropriate in Woburn, what is the city looking for, what are community members looking for, what are city council members looking for, what are you all looking for? And that's in that ideating, proposing, testing, and now we're kind of at this, at the point where we're looking for some decisions about what should be in this plan. The, the plan needs to be, in order for it to be an approved housing production plan at the local level and then go to the state, which gives you that safe harbor if you ever fall below the 10%. This plan, having it approved by the state, doesn't mean you have to do everything in the plan. It's all voluntary still, but just by having the plan approved by you, the planning board, as well as the city council and then by the state, it gives you that extra level of protection if Woburn does fall below the 10% at any point in time. It gives you the ability to make that incremental progress and getting into safe harbor even if you're not at the 10%. All right, so we're closing in on the end here and we'll be making some revisions based on our discussion tonight, going to the city council next month and then at that point it would be final. So the components you've already seen are the housing needs assessment and the development constraints and opportunities analysis, which we presented last time we were here. And tonight, what we want to focus on is the five-year goals and then a menu of strategies. And I like to emphasize, it's really a menu, it's not a blueprint. Are any of you architects or engineers by training or? No, okay, well, you know what menus and blueprints are, even if you're not an engineer. You know, a blueprint is something that you're committing to implement every single thing on that blueprint, whereas a menu, you go to the restaurant and you order the things that are really speaking to you at that moment. And so that's how we look at this menu of strategies. And again, a lot of the way we worded these are consider this or investigate that, so I just want to emphasize that you're not bound by this plan even after you approve it. All right, so five-year goals, so the number one, and even though these aren't technically ordered in terms of strict priority, we do want to put, especially for goal number one, what we heard throughout the process as being the top priority. So I'm saying they're not prioritized, but we did choose goal number one in a way that is prioritized. The rest of them, I would say, really are not. But staying over that 10%, striving to maintain at least 10% of your year-round homes as eligible for the state subsidized housing inventory, so staying in compliance, that was the number one, the number one goal. And then expanding choice, just expanding choices that reflect your community values, including affordability, homeownership opportunities, which we heard every time we went out and talked to people, and the ability for residents to stay in Woburn across all stages of their life. And then we added encouraging thoughtful development such as mixed-use areas, homes near transit, accessible and intergenerational housing, as well as starter homes, which we also heard several times throughout the process, and housing with supportive services for folks with disabilities, including older adults. And you'll see the, once we get into the strategies, the strategies kind of follow from these goals. Goal three is really focusing on those local needs, encouraging creation of homes that are truly affordable for Woburn's residents, which if you remember from our presentation last time, we demonstrated that the area median income is really higher than Woburn's median income. And so when you get a 40B, a straight 40B comprehensive permit and they're setting the affordability levels at 80% of the area median income, that's actually too high for most of Woburn residents who actually need that housing. So that's why we have this one in here. Truly affordable for Woburn residents, especially older adults, lower-income households whose incomes fall below those regional averages. Prioritize housing that meets local needs, not just state thresholds, so that more residents can live securely and stay in Woburn as they age. So that's goal number four, sorry, that was three. Four is aligning growth and capacity. We also heard this a lot. And so we added in prioritizing fiscally responsible investments in infrastructure, municipal infrastructure, public schools and essential services to keep pace with incremental, well-planned residential and mixed-use growth. Leveraging local funding with state and federal resources to the extent that things are eligible and available, as well as public-private partnerships, leveraging private funds so that Woburn can ensure growth enhances quality of life rather than extending the city's capacity beyond what it can, it can withhold or withstand, I should say. Okay. And then number five is aligning, coordinate and connect. So this is really about coordinating within Woburn and connecting and basically aligning goals as well as communication. So strengthening coordination among local boards and departments to align housing efforts with city goals, and this is other city goals too. Housing is not, of course, a lone island. It's connected to all these other things. And so aligning your housing initiatives and your housing policies with goals for economic development, transportation and sustainability. And then improving local capacity to implement housing initiatives, and we have some ideas around that. And then connecting Woburn residents with things that are already out there. There are already state and local programs to support people staying in their homes, rehabbing their homes, making them more energy efficient. So making sure residents know that these are available to them. So that's all in that goal number five. All right, so the menu of strategies, we have strategies in three categories. The first is planning and policy tools, mostly it's zoning. The second is local action or programs, things that the city of Woburn can do with its own money, its own resources or leveraging state or other monies, and then its own properties. And then the third is community engagement and capacity building. And so we'll show you the menu based on these three, these three categories. So under the first one, planning and policy tools, it's looking at modernizing rules, encouraging thoughtful development and encouraging new housing that fits the community's scale and architectural and built character. So there is a, what I love to just flip to, in your chapter two, towards the end, there is a list of all the strategies, it's a little bit of a cheat sheet, and, you know, there's all the details there in the chapter, but we love this little cheat sheet that just shows you, we didn't, we don't have the whole thing here, but we have a cheat sheet that basically shows you how, well, we have two. One shows you how do each of these planning and policy tool strategies relate to the goals, those five goals, was it five or six? I think it was five. Five goals that I just showed you, so there's one matrix that shows you that. And then the second matrix is an action plan that says, well, when could you do this? Could you do it in year one or year five? And there's nothing scientific about that. If you feel like, I think this one should go in year five, definitely just let us know. I'm not showing you that level of detail here, but that's what this, that's what, part of what's on the screen is from that, one of those two matrices. And so there are seven ideas for planning and policy tools. One is around, and some of these things you're already talking about. One is around boosting housing in your downtown area, particularly looking at your business downtown district and looking at the design for both mixed-use and multifamily that complements what's already there. The second is unlocking value in underused areas, and there were, you know, several areas that were pointed out specifically, but this one more generally talks about zoning in more underutilized industrial or office park areas and really looking at allowing for mixed use so that you don't lose that commercial viability, but you could probably have both. And, and looking at, you know, those, you know, ways to have that housing that still retains and enhances that commercial tax base. Three is right sizing zoning for more starter homes. We did hear the idea of starter homes, including homeownership, and looking at, you know, what I view as starter homes as, you know, maybe, maybe many of you started out in homes like these. I, I started out in a, I actually started out in a two-family, that was the first home we bought so we could rent the, the bottom floor and live above. That's one kind of starter home. But another kind of starter home is just like a ranch or something smaller, a little bit more affordable, on a smaller lot size. And so starter homes can fit really well into your existing neighborhoods. And so looking at if you right-size your zoning to actually reflect what's already built on the ground, because you may remember from my earlier presentation that about 65% of all the existing residential properties don't even conform to zoning. And we just looked at lot size and frontage, we didn't look at, you know, height or other setbacks or open space percentage and all of that. So just on the two, lot size and frontage, 65%. So if you right-size that zoning, that unlocks the ability for more starter homes right away. People can, you know, if they, if they want, of course, it's all private property, so it's all, it's all a freedom of choice here, but it's, it's if people want to make more use of a larger property, they could, with right-sized zoning that reflects the neighborhood, they could potentially build a starter home. So it's small-scale stuff. The fourth one is deepening affordability. So we pointed out just a moment ago that the regional levels of affordability are really just too high for Woburn. And so we think you can embed some, either through incentives or through requirements, and you'll want to look at what's really feasible, you're not trying to stagnate inclusionary zoning developments, but you're trying to encourage more deeply affordable. So you just want to look at the numbers carefully. But incentivizing or restricting, you know, you can look at both, both tools, the carrot and the stick, to see what makes the most sense, but looking at how can we get more of those deeply affordable units, not just right at that 80% area median income, because that's not affordable to most Woburn residents. How can we get some of those, some of the at 50%, some at 30%, so that more Woburn residents can take advantage of those new affordable units coming online through your inclusionary zoning? So that's what number four is all about. Streamlining approvals, are there ways to simplify and coordinate permitting processes? You know, you want to look at that carefully and do really a deep dive in how are things done now and are there ways to make it a little bit more streamlined without losing that local control over, over the design and the site planning and the location? Modernizing the zoning code in general, completing a comprehensive zoning rewrite to modernize outdated use definitions, dimensional standards and just alignment with state laws, best practices, things like that. I think you're already talking about this, I think, tell me if I'm misspeaking, but it's just a, really a cleanup. And that actually also can help, number five, because if zoning is more clear and can be rewritten in a way that has alignment throughout the document and with those state laws and best practices, it sometimes can also streamline those improvements because there's not so much interpreting that needs to happen. The, the zoning law lays it out in a clear way. So just looking at if there are opportunities for that. And then seven is encouraging more sustainable and resilient housing development. So we say, look at exploring incentives for more green building, energy-efficient or net-zero housing projects and not to the point of requiring it or, or being very overly strict about it, but certainly looking at can we incentivize doing more than what we'd be required to do? Do you already have the stretch code adopted? I think you do, yeah. So it's basically like what else can we do to build in some incentives above and beyond what people are required to do at a minimum? All right. So the next section is the, what you can do with your own land and your own money and, you know, of course, leveraging other resources like state funds. Unlocking underutilized land that the, the city may own, supporting mixed-income housing, I already talked about those deeply affordable units, and then fostering those public-private partnerships so you can really leverage the private sector as well. So there are four strategies in this section. Looking at the Anderson Regional Transportation Center, can that be a mixed-use hub? I know the state is already looking to do something there and just working in collaboration with the state to make sure that it makes sense for Woburn and you can leverage that area and see improved transportation along with the project. Revitalizing key sites through strategic redevelopment. So there are some sites that were pointed out to us as, in the process, that are either closed or underutilized. One that was mentioned is the closed Sonesta Select Hotel. Other properties were mentioned in the Woburn, in the downtown area, and can those be supported so that they can see some redevelopment for either mixed-use or mixed-income or both? And then advancing redevelopment of the Wyman and McGar school sites, looking at are there redevelopment opportunities there? Could those sites support housing or mixed-use or mixed-income? And of course, being owned by the city, they would need to be offered for private development through a compliant 30B, chapter 30B compliant disposition process. We've worked with a lot of cities and towns on this process, so if you do end up having questions on it, you can just let us know. We write requests for proposals, we help communities with finding the right developer for those sites. It can be a lengthy process, but it can really see some good results. And we like to also encourage a lot of good community engagement through that process so that residents can really have a say on what the direction of those public sites will be. And then integrating housing and health services, we heard this through the process as well, supporting initiatives that embed mental health, substance abuse, case management services within those supportive housing developments. All right, and then community engagement and capacity building. So this has to do kind of three-pronged, it's about communication, coordination, as well as leadership. And the real, the real point of it, or the intention is, we want, and you want, Woburn residents to stay informed, to, we want the boards to collaborate effectively and we want any plans you have around housing initiatives or reuse of public properties or anything like that to really translate into action. So we have four ideas around this. One is to consider, and I know sometimes this can be very controversial, but so many communities have benefited from the Community Preservation Act and already every time there's a transaction. And already every time there's a transaction in Woburn, you're already paying a fee. Each individual transaction is already paying a fee into the state Community Preservation Trust Fund that doesn't get spent in Woburn right now, only because you don't have CPA adopted locally. So your citizens are already putting into that state. Um, so leveraging that is one idea. And of course CPA is not just about housing. It also supports historic preservation, open space conservation and outdoor recreation. But housing is certainly a key component of it. Um, and so we see some benefit there for Woburn to have some extra funds. It can actually support your capacity, um, in implementing housing as well as support things like if you did want to put an RFP out for one or both of those school properties, it could help you write those RFPs and, and select a developer and even put some local funds into the pot to make it, uh, more attractive to get state funds and, um, tax credits and things like that. Um, explore, we heard the, the idea of a starter home so many times. We wanted to think of not just a zoning idea, which we already presented you, but another idea that you could have more of a initiative around a starter home program. So Woburn, you know, every, every city and town we work with has a tax title inventory, right? Tax foreclosed land. People are not paying taxes for whatever, whatever reason. There's always some properties out there. Um, staying on top of that inventory because sometimes those properties, once they're taxed foreclosed by the city, sometimes they actually can be development. Sometimes they can be Habitat for Humanity. Sometimes they can be, um, small, you know, single family or two-family development that could provide a starter home that would actually be affordable with a deed restriction for first-time home buyers. So it's worth keeping, um, your eye on that. And, uh, and one more thing we didn't highlight here, but we talk about in the write-up is one way to do a program like that. It makes it really easy to do it if you have the money. So you have the CPA funds. If you have some land, you've got the tax title land. And if you have a housing trust, that just becomes a vehicle that you can actually do that kind of program. And they usually do, trusts usually just do small projects like that, most of the time. Maybe not in Worcester, um, but in most communities they do small things like Habitat for Humanity. They take a tax title parcel and they find a developer. Um, so that's an idea for a starter home program. It might not create hundreds and hundreds of units, but you might get a few and they could be affordable. Whereas the zoning idea we had would be market rate. They're more affordable on smaller lots and smaller houses, but they're not affordable with a capital A that count on the subsidized housing inventory. So these are just two different ways to, to look at how can we in, in, invest our time or funds, energy into starter homes? Um, and then strengthening that cross-sector housing coordination, improving coordination between municipal departments. We had some specific ideas around that. Um, one thing that some communities do is like a housing roundtable with all the various departments or boards that are related. Um, Concord does this very effectively for many, many years. We suggested it to them when we did one of their earlier housing production plans. And they've been doing it ever since. And we've gone to several of them and they, they meet, I think a couple of times a year. And they basically just hit all the, all the things that they're, that they're thinking about, issues or, or initiatives that they're working on. And it's just the way, a way to build in some communication. And then launching a housing communication strategy. So you were really fortunate to have an outreach coordinator. Not all communities have that. And we got to spend some time talking with her. She also came to the forum. And so developing a proactive housing communication strategy could be led by her. And it could really tie into that idea of keeping residents, you know, very well informed, being really transparent as well as providing information, not just on housing needs and housing initiatives and programs that the city's working on, but also trying to help connect community members, residents to those programs that are already out there that they may not know about for weatherization and home rehab to really take advantage of that. Okay. So that are, those are all the ideas. Let me talk about the next steps. And then I'm happy to take any suggestions you have for changes. This is certainly just a draft and we're happy to make revisions before we send it to the city council in a couple of weeks. Um, but the next steps are getting your comments. You also can, you know, certainly take more time if you want more time to gather your thoughts and, uh, and send us comments. You can give those to us tonight if you're ready for that. But you can also just send us an email. Um, you know, within a week, we just asked, cause we need some time to make the revisions and get it into the city council. And we want to talk with John and Casey as well. Make sure we're all on the same page before we submit to the city council. So we're presenting to the city council. They'll get it in their packet whenever it goes out, the week before that December 2nd meeting, um, which I think must be the week of Thanksgiving. So you could see we're a little tight on time. Um, that's why we asked you to send, send it to us next week. And then we'll just put the finishing touches on in December after the city council reviews. And then it will come back. I mean, if you feel ready at this very moment, you're welcome to vote to approve it, but there's no pressure to do that. You could certainly, um, wait until after the city council presentation and then take it up more officially in December to vote to approve it. Um, this is our last meeting with you, but certainly John and Casey can, can, uh, can be there with you. Um, if you, if you're not feeling ready to approve it tonight, that's perfectly fine. Um, and then, uh, and then that's it. And then once it's approved by both the planning board and the city council, there needs to just be a, uh, it's essentially a letter that goes to the state along with the plan that says, this has been approved by the planning board and the city council on this date. And we're looking for the state to now approve it. So that's the process. All right. So that's everything. Happy to take comments, questions. Um, you may have other things on your agenda too. So I'm, I'm here at your disposal.
Yeah. I just want the, uh, planning board members to realize, um, Casey and I have been working with the consultants on this document. And again, it's in a draft form. Um, today I was able to go over with Jen and Lucy just some technical language that's within the document itself to make sure it's accurate and there aren't any misstatements in there, um, that stand out. So making sure that we talk with the, the city engineer, the building commissioner, going over the document and the language, just making sure that it's accurate in, in the statements that are made throughout the document. That's what our job is to make sure that there's accuracy in what, what it states. But as far as the policies, um, are concerned, that Jen just went over. Um, if there's anything that really stands out in this presentation or the content itself, the language of Chapter Two that stands out that you'd like to discuss tonight and ask to tweak, that's what this meeting is all about. Um, one of the issues that came up leading up to this meeting and it was expressed in emails to the board, again, leading up to this meeting tonight. Um, working with Massport for the potential, you know, possible continuing development of the RTC. Um, Massport is looking, as well as the city and the private sector community. They're looking for the potential for a mixed use development, meaning both commercial and multifamily residential with supporting retail, uh, space, not a retail Mecca type of environment, but just supporting retail space for that, um, what's conceptually a potential for the development of that site. It's a, say, 36 acre site. And outside of the RTC area, there's still development potential. So this spin-off effect of anything that may take place development-wise beyond what's there already on the RTC. Um, what was originally proposed and how it was worded in the original draft for tonight's meeting was that, um, it was going to be a, um, mixed income transit village. And I think that more or less expressed that the redevelopment of the RTC would be exclusive to multifamily resident development. And that's not what the city is looking for in any respect. And Massport is more in line with a mixed use development. But also keep in mind for the RTC, Massport, the MBTA, MassDOT, the future development potential. The number one priority is to make sure they're enhancing the multimodal transportation, uh, needs of that particular site. Uh, and just for instance, there's a 70% projected increase in the parking capacity. That's what the projections are for the future of that site. So right now, things are getting back to a capacity that was known on the property and experienced on the RTC pre-COVID. Um, during the last few years, there was a lot less commuter traffic, parking on that site on a daily basis, especially the commuter traffic. Um, but we're at that level right now. It's pre-COVID parking capacity. And Massport, along with the MBTA, their projections are for a 70% increase. Now, the vast majority of that traffic is coming off of 93, um, southbound in the morning and going back on 93 northbound to their places that they live. So, um, that's what's going on up there. There's a, there's a projection to enhance the parking capacity in the mass transit needs. And that's the priority of Massport. That's the priority of the MBTA. Um, but in addition to that, um, Massport has an RFP that's almost ready to go out for public solicitation. And that would involve a phasing approach. So there'd be a phase one. And if that's successful, it'll go to a phase two and possibly a phase three. But right now, phase one is a, a six acre portion of the multi-acre parcel that exists on the RTC. But that's, that's one example. If, if there are other, um, concerns of this board relative to the examples that are put forth in Chapter Two, um, you know, we can discuss those tonight. Um, Wyman School, for instance, the Magar School. Um, Jen has suggested in the document that, um, you know, the city does and is still in the process of trying to figure out what it wants to do with the Wyman School. That issue is in the hands of the city council. Right now it's under their control. It's under their purview. Um, the one alderman, along with the other alderman, they're working with the public to try to come up with ideas for the future use of that property. So no one's made any type of decisions, um, either in a public forum or, you know, outside of a public forum relatives to the Wyman School or the Magar School. Everything is just suggested at this point in time in the content of this Chapter Two of this update. Any other open up, Dave?
So John, what's the current population of Woburn?
Well, probably within a thousand to 2,000 people. It's projected to either be 41,000 to 43,000 and probably growing at this point in time. But it fluctuates quite a bit.
The reason I'm asking is how big do we want Woburn to be? Um, you know, at one point they went from 5,000 square foot lots to 12,000 square foot lots. And now it sounds like that is not in the best interest of trying to generate more housing, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, there are, I, I live in North Woburn and, and I have a 12,000 square foot lot. But if I walk up Pearl Street, there's a whole bunch of these little houses that were built at another time. And I guess you would call them, um, legal non-conforming?
Yeah. Pre-zoning.
Right. And, um, so are we looking to go backwards?
No, you know, this is seriously such a complex issue. It, it, it's so multifaceted. It's incredible. But one thing to keep in mind, you know, anybody over 50, say, you know, I'm in my 60s, people that are in their 70s. We, we grew up in that era where it was very typical for families to consist of five. I came from a family of eight, uh, previous generations, um, you know, and how this country grew so fast, especially in the colonial era. Um, you know, once people were able to feed their families, there was no reason to stop making children. So a lot of families in the colonial days consisted of 10 to 15 people. And you know, that, that number of children per household has continually shrunk since that period of time. So the average household size right now in Woburn and regionally and statewide, even nationally, is 2.43, I believe it is now. Down from 2.7 people, average household side, size from, let's see, that was in, uh, 1980, maybe 2000. So the average household size has dramatically shrunk over the years and it continues to shrink. So the, the, the largest segment of our population, the largest growing segment of our population, this has been the case for 30 or 40 years, is a single-person household. So there are a lot of single-person households. That makes up what? 30% of the households?
Sounds about right. I don't have the number in front of me.
And then the two-person household makes up another 30. And then you have, you know, larger households that would make up the other 30 to 40%. And the average is 2.43 right now. Um, will it go down to two as your average size also? In all likelihood, that'll happen because it continually starts, it continually shrinks. It hasn't been expanded in forever. So, um, that's the one thing to keep in mind. Population growth isn't as dramatic as it was in decades past. And I'll just give you a quick, for instance, when I was a planner in Hudson, New Hampshire, and I went up there in 2002, um, we had growth control throughout that whole state. Every municipality had growth control. And then all of a sudden, over the next few years, they realized, wait a minute, the population's not growing and we need a growing population to sustain our housing stock. Because New Hampshire was actually experiencing, and it still is, um, a 1% um, population growth, which is almost unsustainable as far as sustaining your economy, your housing stock. You know, just creating, um, a healthy, economically sustainable environment. So that's the problem. You know, people aren't having kids. They really aren't. And you know, if you're not reproducing as a people to, um, infill the population needs of, of a community, of a state, of a country, you're in trouble. And, and you know, this is what we're dealing with. It's not a matter of, you know, in 10 years, is Woburn going to consist of 80,000 people, which would be a double from today? Um, I, I doubt very seriously based on all of the data that's studied constantly, demographic data, that that would happen. Um, you know, I, I'm sure there are projections of how that could come about. And, you know, it probably consists of letting a lot more people into this country than has happened in the last 10 years, you know, a lot more. And you know, I don't think that's going to be the case either. When you start projecting these things and trying to predict the future and, you know, oh, we need the population to increase. Well, how's the population going to increase if people aren't, you know, having more than one or two children? And people aren't even marrying in the degree that they did in our society for the last few centuries. They're not just, they're not doing that. So, you know, there's, there's so many variables involved with population growth and trying to accurately project what's going to happen. Um, you know, you have to be a soothsayer and somebody that's able to read the crystal ball really accurately to try to really figure that out.
So John?
Yeah.
My anecdotal observation, um, everything you say being true is that people in this city are knocking down little houses and building big houses.
Yeah.
And I know myself in, in several cases, they built a three or a four-bedroom house and there's two people living in it. And it was their choice to do that. But, um, I, I don't see us making- But I, I don't see us making smaller houses. I haven't seen a smaller house go up on any piece of land anywhere in this city unless they subdivided the land into legally some two, you know, like across the street from my house, you remember what we went through? They did all this jury rigging, they met all the requirements, but they ended up with two great big houses on what, at one time, had been one great big house on one great big lot. So I, I don't know where these smaller houses are, are, or who's building them, but I'm not seeing them.
Can I continue with this, Chairman? The discussion? David, you are pointing out very important aspects of what we're talking about here. You know, the pace of new houses in these large houses that are being built, it, it has slowed pretty dramatically over the last few years, and that's a result of the cost of labor, materials, interest rates. You know, you'd be surprised at how few houses, when you really focus in on it, are being built in Woburn right now. You know, and that's the same for the region. But, you know, another variable that's involved with this, and, and it's come into being, is the 2023 housing statute that allows for the ADUs by right within a half-mile radius of a bus stop or a bus service line. And then the special permit allowance for a second ADU in a single-family house. And it's supposed to be by special permit. I have yet to be convinced that, that special permit can be denied. I, I can't figure out what the reasoning be, would be, the lawful reasoning for a second ADU within a single-family house within the statutory allowances and the guideline allowances. You know, how a community could actually restrict by denial a special permit for a second ADU. What I'm getting at is that, and I've said this before publicly, the same holds true with that statute for duplexes. And I've been told triplexes, quadplexes. All of these types of housing could all have an ADU plus another one. So a duplex could become a sixplex. Quadplex, you know, goes on and on and on. So, you know, the, the statutory allowances as of 2023, that could be the hidden, not hidden, but the, this statutory variable that does allow for a pretty dramatic increase in population that not many people are thinking about right now. Because if, in fact, housing in Massachusetts by this new statute does allow for all of this housing to be built, the cost of housing will come down. You know, the demand will, will be met and then surpassed. And, you know, a lot more people would be able to afford to come to Massachusetts to live, therefore increasing, you know, the population pretty dramatically in addition to what we're thinking about. So, you know, ADU legislation could, again, dramatically increase the population that we're not thinking about based on the average household size being 2.43. While with ADUs, you could end up having three eighty, three living units where there only exists one today. And, and over a short period of time, five, 10, 15 years, I, I say that relatively nonchalantly, that's a short period of time. It is a short period of time in, in our lives. But, you know, that's where you could end up with a lot more people living in Woburn than what we're planning for. And that statute exists on the books right now. And we have no idea what that demand will end up becoming. You know, is every house that will be built from here on out going to include at least an ADU? Right now, the building commissioner, by statute and guidelines, will only allow for a new house, a single-family house in a single-family neighborhood, to consist of a single-family living unit. Only after the building has been built could an ADU be introduced to that property, and then a second one by special permit. But, you know, I, I don't know if that's going to stand either, personally. I don't know whether people are going to be allowed to apply for a single-family with an ADU. And at the same time, before they get the special permit, while they're planning for the building of the house, they go to the City Council for a special permit. But again, I haven't seen the evidence that a city or a town in Massachusetts would be able to deny a special permit if somebody wanted to make a single into a three. And there are other, there are other density provisions being discussed in this state that are much higher than what I'm talking about. And Cambridge is a perfect example. I've been announced to anybody last year or the year before, single-family houses are actually prohibited in any existing single-family houses.
Well, they're not prohibited. They're just allowed to have
Yeah.
... higher densities.
But, you know, and correct, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but in Cambridge, by bylaw passed by their council, someone could build a 65-foot in height structure with as many units as they can fit within that height and on that lot with no parking requirements or anything. So theoretically, you could get, say, 10 units, just going vertical up to a height of 65 feet in Cambridge. And that's what they passed. And I don't, you know, I don't want to be, I don't want to be, a, a finger's pointed at me that I'm the ones, you know, putting this big alarm system up about what's happening and what could possibly happen statewide, because the rumor mill is out there that, you know, we could be looking at something like that. That's, I'm saying could.
I have not heard that. And what Cambridge has done with its zoning, I know it gives a lot of very open provisions for affordable housing developments. But that's a, that's a local city decision. That's not something the state imposed on them.
No, I hundred percent agree. But what I've heard is that the state, state officials are looking at that as an example of what they may want to. And please, state officials, anybody
Yeah, I haven't heard.
... watching this and listening to me.
Yeah.
I'm open for anybody to counter, argue with what I'm saying, because I'm just saying that this is stuff that I'm hearing. I don't know it's factual, but.
I've heard more modest conversations happening at the state level, nothing like what Cambridge is doing. Yeah.
Okay. Ken, first of all, the outstanding job. You guys really did a great job on this. And I just do have a couple of questions in regards to this. Is it your experience that, as I wrote things down, that the developers really have to be on board also? Because let's say we want to build smaller houses and we change the lot sizes and things, then they build these giant things on these smaller lots. So I see the developers have to be on board on all this also. And also, and, and my next thought on it is that where the median income is more in the district, the affordable housing, that's an actual rule that, you know, it has to be a certain percentage of the, of the income, of median income. If the district is higher than Woburn, how does Woburn ever get to the point where we could tell developers, all right, you have to do affordable housing, but this is where you have to be. You, you don't, you don't have to pay attention to the state level, what they require. This is where we want you to be. Isn't that a problem?
Yeah. So let me take them one at a time.
Okay.
So the first one, I think you're talking about more that idea of smaller homes, the starter homes, and looking at zoning, looking at your lot sizes, your frontage requirements. But what we didn't mention in the presentation, but if you wanted to look at that, you would also want to look at your, your height, your other dimensional requirements, to really look at, control the envelope of what's being built. So that if you had a larger lot, you could maybe do a larger house, like what, you know, like what you were saying, you're seeing in terms of tear downs and rebuilds. But if you have a smaller lot, then the house would be right-sized for that lot. And you'd want to look at your zoning dimensional provisions very carefully to make sure that the envelope you're allowing through zoning is requiring those smaller buildings on smaller lots. Some communities do create something called floor area ratio, and I don't remember if you have FAR here or not.
No.
No.
But we have, we have a maximum percentage of building ground coverage.
For ground coverage. The floor area ratio looks at the whole envelope of the building and says, and it's a ratio. It's a, it's a, you know, if you, if you have this size lot, you do the math and figure out how big the house can be. And you decide what that is. Is it, you know, if you have a 12,000 square foot lot, can you do a 24,000 square foot house? I'm not suggesting that. It's a very big house. But you do some kind of a ratio that basically says, this is how big the house can be in relation to the lot size. So it's in the way you craft the zoning. In terms of developers being on board, you're right. Like for any zoning to work, there has to be a market, it has to be feasible. Sometimes the, and I want to get to the inclusionary zoning housing policy with your question about the deeply affordable, but just let's use inclusionary zoning as an example of how sometimes zoning creates a situation where developers can't make it pencil out, so nothing happens. There have been several cases, really around the country, but I know several in Massachusetts, not legal cases, but just situations, where a community adopted inclusionary zoning, but it didn't make sense in the market, and therefore they didn't get the development that they were looking for. They may have gotten more 40Bs instead because the inclusionary wasn't written in a way that the developers could, you know, it's a business, right? My husband's a developer. You've got to at least make your equity back, and then hopefully you get paid for the work that you did as well, creating that building. And so it has to pencil out. And so you can create zoning that is so restrictive that the developer can't get it to pencil out, and then you basically stilt the market. And you're doing the opposite of unlocking those housing opportunities for the starter homes. So it's a two-way, it's a two-way thing. There has to be a market for it, for sure. The other thing we didn't talk about, but we certainly could, is some communities, if you have lar, any larger lots left to develop, I know John and Casey took us around, and I, I was thinking, there probably aren't a lot of larger lots left to develop, but, but if there are, some communities are looking at cottage housing bylaws that create, like a cottage housing village. Concord has one that's not affordable, but it's very beautiful, and it has those smaller, smaller homes. They're mostly for, you know, retirees, they don't have to be, but they're, they're, they're effectively condos, but you have a house that is separated from everyone else's little cottage. But they're set up like condos so that you don't own the ground underneath. It's in a association. So it actually is a bit more of an affordable model for homeownership. And then you typically preserve, it's a, it's similar to a cluster where you preserve a lot of the open space and cluster this, you know, could also be tiny house village, but I've seen them as condo, sorry, cottage villages. So that's another idea for those smaller houses. But looking at the FAR, we could certainly write more about what you might want to consider if you want to look at the zoning and encouraging those smaller lots. And we could talk about FAR and other dimensional requirements to try to incentivize those smaller homes or require them, really. The second part of your question, though, was about the deeply affordable. And so you already have inclusionary zoning embedded in several of your overlay districts. But I believe, and correct me if I'm mis, if I'm misstating, I believe it only requires affordable units at 80% of the area median income. But what you could do, because those are local bylaws, what you could do is say that we'll give you some incentives, that's the carrot way of doing it, or we'll require you, that's the stick way of doing it, to have more deeply affordable units, not just the 80%, but maybe you have, I don't know, I'm going to make up numbers, 20% of the units that, that you're, you know, offering as affordable are 80%, another 20 at 50%. And, I don't know, someone else do the math for the rest of it. But the idea is that you can write those inclusionary zoning bylaws in any way you'd like. My caveat, when I was presenting it, though, is you do want to make sure it pencils out. So what we've done for clients is we can run through an example development, say, you know, let's look at three different scenarios of how you may want to change your inclusionary zoning, and let's take a sample site in Woburn, and we can do like a, a yield analysis that shows you, okay, I'm going to put my developer hat on, and this is what a developer might be able to build here, given your other zoning requirements, given the environmental constraints, et cetera. And then if we have different scenarios saying, well, we want 50% to be deeply affordable and 50% to be 80%, let's write the pro forma and figure out if that pencils out or not. And if not, let's slide the scale a bit and see if another. So we've done things like that, but, but my, my real point is that if you're looking at making those adjustments, you do want to make sure that you're not stifling the development that you're actually looking for by making sure that what you put in is actually feasible. Yeah. And that might change in time. In 10 years from now, what's feasible today might be completely different, so you'll want to relook at it as well. Does that make sense?
That's why I was saying you got to have the developers on board too, because.
Yeah. It has to pencil out. If it doesn't pencil out, the developer won't be on board.
There'll be nothing there.
Because it's their job. Yeah. It's their job to not lose money.
Does anybody have any questions, Jim?
So what's driving this whole housing production to stay above the 10%, right?
Number one.
Where are we at currently?
10.7.
How long do you think will take to exhaust that seven times?
Well, we, no, we have inclusionary zoning, so every new housing development has to qualify producing that, that percentage that helps us stay above that.
How long will that take? Three to five years?
I don't think we know exactly.
Pretty accurate, I think.
By 2030.
It holds true.
By 2030, you're.
Give us a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have a thought process here. You talked about the MBTA Regional Transportation Center, putting a six-phase development of some few thousand units, of which how many are going to be low-income and moderate, right?
Yeah.
They're probably going to surpass the amount of units we have currently in the system. So is that done over a 20-year period? We're trying to increase affordable housing units, which automatically are going to be coming down the pike to us by this MBTA project, which we're not going to have much say.
Yeah, but I, I got to qualify some of this. In all likelihood, any future development capacity for that particular site, looking at a maximum between 800 and, say, 1,200 housing units. So it's not thousands. And, you know, that's, that would be the max.
Yeah. And that development would have to comply with our zoning, so it would have to comply with our inclusionary bylaw.
Right. And right now, the state is looking at a 15%. They're, they're looking at seriously allowing for 15% affordability of number of units that are built there. So that keeps us above the 10%. So every multi-family development that goes forward in Woburn in compliance with our zoning would at minimum have to provide 10% of the housing units, 10% for affordable. The 10% keeps us at that safe harbor level. Anything above that, 15, 20%, 25% in some of the overlay districts along Commerce Way, keeps us well above that 10%. So it keeps us in that safe harbor category ad infinitum. So we don't really have to worry about that aspect of it. Can I?
One twenty Commerce Way is exactly what you're talking about, okay? That was a overlay district, they did the zoning, the retail down below, there's six stories currently, I believe, and you had a proposal behind the Woburn Mall of eight stories with more units, and it could reduce a little bit. Took in a great number of units over there. You're talking a tract of land of 36 acres, which is six times, seven times the size of the sites that we're talking about currently. Talking about a massive development.
Yeah, but a lot of it.
You did half of it. Yeah, I like to finish my train of thought, okay? If you did half of that amount, right, you're going to certainly be well above. You're going to certainly be well above your 10% goal. Even doing 10% for three years of that development.
A lot of that land is wetland, a lot of it really is undevelopable, based on what the parking transportation needs are for the intermodal transportation. So it's not a, really that massive of a development. It's a good-sized development, but it isn't preposterously large, something that we couldn't scale back to a point where we can handle sewer and water associated with it. You know, the, the major projection is to make sure we stay ahead of what our school needs are.
Please read my next point. So all this increased housing in the city of Woburn, and every single proposal, whether it be residential or commercial, boils down to the same thing that we hear about, gridlock in the city of Woburn. Let's increase more people, the same square footage, infrastructure, railways are not meant to, set up for the capacity we have currently, and we want to increase. So how does a person get from point A to B in afford housing but can't get to work because you can't get there on time?
Now, I'm not talking jets and stuff here, but, you know, the projections.
Logical. I'll let you go on for 20 minutes, John. I'm, I'm trying to get one point across the floor, and, and I'm not hearing any kind of feedback. I'm hearing about zoning changes to put in lots that currently in my neighborhood fall bungalows of 12,000 square foot, they're ripped down, and they put up three-story McMansions, okay? With a fourth one coming for the next few months. It's not happening. Developers are going to make money on land, in the land procurement, before they do it. Not one developer I know in the city of Woburn that builds residential is a true general contractor from the time the bucket goes on ground for utilities, the excavation, the formwork, the building of the structure to the landscape, does it soup to nuts. Usually doing one specific thing or another, or they're just managing the whole property because they have the money behind it. So how is a developer going to make money on a small lot?
I, I, this, this is being, and Jen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is being presented to us as a possibility of doing it, of doing this way. I tend to agree with you, Jim, because we don't need more. You know, we, we, we've built everywhere in the city of Woburn what's left. We don't have to do any of this. This is just a plan that's being presented to us, and that if we decide, if the city council decides, whatever, to, to, to build along these routes, these are parameters that we can use, these are things that we can use. So it, it doesn't, that, do we need more small houses? We do need more small houses in Woburn, because, you know, there aren't any. There are, there are no places for somebody like myself, or Dave, because we're the oldest ones here, but.
Old, did you say old?
Oldest, oldest ones. I didn't say we're old, I said we're the oldest ones.
Okay.
To go in Woburn, because everything being built is these, you know, two-story McMansions with five bedrooms and all this stuff. So, so if we determine as a planning board or a city council that we want more smaller houses in the city of Woburn, we want more of this, then what's being laid out in front of us is a potential plan to do it. But we don't have to do any of this stuff, so.
I agree with you 100%. I'm just bringing to light some of the, the statements that are being made and proposed that, before they get momentum, that I don't think it is a good idea, in my mind, okay, on some of these considerations, the seven points that are brought up there. I don't think they're very well vetted out, in my opinion. Okay? That's my point of view.
May I have?
Yeah.
10 minutes? Only kidding, only kidding. Um, no.
Jim, would you just sit down?
Oh, thank you.
No, no, no. I'm only kidding. No, but, you know, one way to create smaller housing is to allow for smaller lot sizes. For instance, we have 12,000 square foot, minimum lot size, 100 feet of frontage, with the 25% building ground coverage allowance. 50% of the lot has to be open space. Now, if we were to consider, and I'm just throwing this out, if you want smaller houses, you would cut the lot size in half, say 6,000. I've been, I've had, I've had it proven to me that 7,500 square foot house lots are very good-sized house lot, with the 25% building ground coverage. It allows for a 2,000 square foot house, a little bit less. But, you know, that's, that's a house size that most household sizes could easily fit into and provide for at least two parking spaces, if not four, with the, with the garage, a nice little yard, and side yard. So that's one way. You, you restrict the size of the house that can be built just by the virtue of the size lot. So if you want smaller houses instead of these big McMansions, that can happen on a 12,000 square foot lot, based on our present zoning provisions, so density. So that's one way you could do that. You know, as, as far as, you know, Woburn growing disproportionately, based on what we're talking about, is still, I mean, I just don't see it happening. But there is a provision that is seriously being written about, so it's in writing. And this is a concept of, it's called social housing, that is being put forth by the governor and the administration. And does anybody here have any idea what social housing is?
Something we won't like.
Yeah, well, social housing is housing that's being talked about that would be created on state-owned land, municipal-owned land, and that it would be owned by the state, financed by the state, built by the state, managed by the state. And social housing, this is a program that emulates social housing, public housing, that has been created in many numbers in Austria, and I believe Czechoslovakia. And it's been successful in those countries. And it's housing that is being written about, discussed, and debated about, as I'm saying this, that would be adopted by the state. And the, the number one thing you have to realize when you're talking about housing is this incredible demand for housing. Everybody must know somebody that's trying to locate someplace to live that's affordable. There's plenty of unaffordable housing in this, in this state. There's plenty of it. But who can afford it? So, you know, if the private sector can't afford it, and, and, you know, people criticize this housing crisis, well, when you're looking for a house and you can't, you can't apply with the housing authority, because the lists are so long, you'll never find a house utilizing the housing authorities for, for your lifespan. You know, they, they just don't even allow you to line up and sign up for it. And unless you're destitute and completely homeless, no cause of your own, you could possibly fit into an emergency, emergency housing unit that may be available in your local housing authority. So there is an incredible housing demand, and there's a much more incredible demand for affordable housing in Massachusetts. And what the state is trying to do is really address that incredible demand, to provide for housing, so that you don't have the degree of homelessness that exists today. People living in environments that are just not healthy or whatever. So the government is trying its best to come up with ideas to properly house people, and make our lives healthier, more livable, more user-friendly. And, you know, if you don't have a decent house roof over your head, life's not good. And that's what it's all about. You have this incredible demand for affordable housing, because there's nothing affordable about affordable housing in Massachusetts. So when Jen's talking about deeply affordable, that's the kind of housing that's in the highest demand right now. And we have to do something about this, you know, not only in Massachusetts, but nationwide. And, you know, I think ADUs are going to help alleviate some of that demand. I, I, you know, if they do implement the social housing, I think that's going to help with the situation. I don't really go along with, you know, government being too involved with producing housing. I don't think they manage housing to the degree that it can be managed with the private sector. But, you know, we, we have our work cut out for us. I, I think what we do have in front of us for the city to entertain is the adoption, ultimately by the end of the year, of this housing production update from 2017. And once we tweak everything out of it, I think it's a really good document, it's a game plan. Don't want to refer to it as the blueprint, but it's a good plan for Woburn to try to keep up with, you know, realistically keep up with our, our housing demands within our borders. So we're, you know, we're doing our part, as best we can, to house the people that need to be housed in Woburn adequately, and in a safe manner, and providing good quality housing. So that's what it's really all about.
First of all, I agree with John, that I think this is a great plan. Thank you. But, and although part of the purpose is to be compliant with 40B, I really see all your suggestions as not really 40B, more creating the housing that people actually want. And I'm not that far from the generation of people who can't buy houses, so I completely support that. And if you think about, you know, RTC, 1,000 units, which we can't stop anyway, so we need to figure out how to plan for it, that the stuff that you're talking about here would, you know, how many units could that produce? If it produced 100 units, I think that would be amazing. So it's really not going to tip the scale relative to the other things happening, but for those 100 people who could actually get houses that they need, I think that would be wonderful. So I support it. Thank you.
I just want to add one thing to what, what John mentioned. I hope whatever you said the governor is up to doesn't happen, because I grew up in Cambridge, and they built six housing projects that were supposed to be the answer to the housing issue after World War II, and they were a disaster. And it was totally financed by the government, run by the government, owned by the government, and they were awful. And, 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 you know, the, the government should, in my opinion, advise not think that they are the creators of things. They are, let, let the, the industry take care of business and do whatever it is they're going to do. But I hope that that is not real, that they're thinking of, you know, using government land and government money to start building more government housing, because it doesn't work. It's, it's a terrible idea. And like I said, I, I saw it, I knew the kids that grew up with it, it was just terrible. Just.
Thank you.
My two cents were.
All right, can I, can I get us back to this? Can I, can I? Do we add specifically to this?
Yes, but it's also kind of a rebuttal, but it's a good rebuttal, if, in my own opinion.
I'll be the judge.
Okay, yeah. So, you know, I'm, I'm not a big fan of public housing myself either, but there are communities that manage well public housing. Woburn is one of them. You know, there are, and it's listed in this document, the public housing developments that are in Woburn, and we have a very effective Woburn Housing Authority that manages well and maintains these properties and, and houses people to the best extent possible. So Woburn's a good example of, you know, public housing owned by the state, managed by the municipality through the housing authority. That works. But it, it's, it just doesn't happen by itself. It takes the tenants to work hard at creating a quality of life, it takes a community working effectively, and giving the housing authority the tools and the financing necessary to properly maintain those houses. So it can work, Woburn's a great example, there are many other municipal examples. There, there are plenty of failures that can be looked at and used as examples and learned from. But the, the number one thing is, we, we're always wrestling with this, it's a very, very complex, difficult problem to effectively deal with. And, you know, we have to always continually go through trial and error, and try to make things better as we go from one decade to the next, and as we progress as a society. So, you know, there's a lot of experimenting that's done, some successful, some not, but, you know, we can't stop trying, and that's what we have to continue trying to do.
Okay. What do we do? Oh, so, well, I know that you have tweaked this a little bit, you and Casey, with a couple of different wordings.
Yeah, yeah.
As far as the rest of it goes, you, you guys are both okay with this?
Yeah. I mean, there's going to be changes that happen.
Right.
I, I think we should wait until the city council reviews a draft at their December meeting.
Review this draft?
There, is this the exact draft they're reviewing, or is there a little bit more?
We thought we might revise it based on the discussion tonight, and I know John had a couple of comments that we wanted to change before we submitted it, but if there are no substantive changes tonight, then we would do the tweaks that John talked about, and then submit it to the city council, largely the same as what you saw.
So submitting it to the council, they're just going to look at it at this point, they're not, it's, so it's still?
As far as I know.
It'll still come back to us to?
No, no.
Okay.
What, what we could be doing tonight, but we don't have to, but we could. So you've, everybody's had a chance to read through the draft, and we talked about tonight chapter two, which is the most significant chapter, I think, in my opinion. But it, for the most part, I think everybody agrees with the content of chapter two, as well as, in general, the content of the entire document. If anybody disagrees with it, please speak up. But through some editing, to make sure all of the contents are accurate, relative to talking about infrastructure, relative to addressing these city-owned properties and what could be done, modifying zoning, potentially modifying, not we're, we're changing the zoning. Those are only suggestions in this document. So if we're comfortable with the content, and it is all suggestive, right, and with some few word-ed edits, that we'd be done with it tonight. Am I correct, Jen?
You could, yeah. If you, if you felt like you were ready to vote to approve it, you could tonight.
And you mentioned that earlier.
Or you could wait.
This isn't no gun to anybody's head. If you're not comfortable, don't, don't do that, don't take that action. But if you are comfortable enough, this document can be edited, fine-tuned, delivered to the council, and then they can edit it as they see fit, or they could adopt it as, as its edited version or drafted version is sent to them.
Yeah, if the, if the, if you did decide to approve it tonight, and then the council wanted changes, it would have to come back to you for another round of approval, so it may make sense just to wait until you hear the council's comments.
As long as we have time, the timeframe allows.
I think if you get it done by the end of December, I mean, you're already expired, so it doesn't really matter that much. Yeah.
I know, this is the last meeting that we have in the scope with Jen, but we're able to continue to work on it and make edits and whatnot.
Yeah.
So we could do it again, it's, it's going, the?
Council's December 2nd, I think it is.
December 2nd.
Yeah.
So then if they edit it or do a bunch of different things to it, we would see it again at our next meeting?
December 9th.
Okay.
Yeah, that's possible.
Yeah. All right, so there'll be no motion, no anything?
I think you could wait. I think it's fine.
And then Jen, schedule-wise, Mr. Chairman, so schedule-wise, we get it on, we put it on our December 9th agenda, and then, say we finalize it that night, then it goes back to the council for their first meeting in January, theoretically.
Yes, unless they could, in theory, vote to approve it with changes on December 2nd, and then you guys would vote it with the changes they, so it, it could go many different ways.
It'd be a Christmas, Christmas present, everybody, and done.
Exactly.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So we have nothing going at the moment, then, on this. All right. Jen, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much.
We appreciate your time and your patience.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, let's see, where we going next here? All right, is there anything else on the planning board, directly updates?
Just, just an update. Casey and I have had continual meetings with the analysis going on in the Merrimack Street, New Boston Street area, and I did say in the report for this evening's meeting that I'd bring everybody up to date, along with Casey. Just so everybody knows, we had a very successful groundbreaking ceremony at two sixteen New Boston Street last week. There were a lot of public officials there, including the lieutenant governor, and state reps, state, I mean, city officials, even though it was cold and windy as a January day, everything went off really well, and it was a very good beginning for a site that is sorely in need of new development. And this project, as you're probably aware, it's a hundred and eighty-six thousand square foot, high-tech project that's being built to suit for a tenant, and it's cabin, cabin force. The property was already approved for the project, but they were able to successfully contract with the tenant for the site. There are other exciting projects, you know, that are seeming to finally get going, and do have futures, one at the corner of New Boston Street, Merrimack Street. Just recently, Milton Cat, I think it's Milton Cat, got a special permit for modifying the complex right at the intersection of Merrimack Street and New Boston Street. That's gonna help to improve the aesthetic values of that property, and put a long-term user of that property in place. As far as the analysis is concerned, Casey and I are working very diligently with the consultants to make sure that, you know, we're putting together a vision, plan for that area of Woburn, it's industrial park zone right now, so, starting at the north end of it, being Merrimack Street and New Boston Street, down to the buffer area of School Street, and everything in between, trying to come up with a future design potential for much more of a live-work-play type of zoning environment, you know, trying to figure out, you know, what the best zoning composition is going to be, leading to higher and better, more revenue-producing, better jobs-creating environment. But also recognizing that that industrial park is probably one of the most successful parks of its kind in the state, as it exists today, but it has much more improvement capacity, both aesthetically and jobs-creation-wise, and, you know, there may be potential for a living environment in that area, too. So that's what we're working on, trying to create with this, I'll call it a sectional master plan, for that particular industrial park. But it's pretty exciting, working on this stuff with professionals, you know, and we're meeting with them pretty much on a weekly basis, and it's, it's really been great. We're gonna have them in here, once it's a little bit more solidified, and then this planning board can start working with us, in collaboration with the, you know, the final outcome of this, which would ultimately lead to the council and the planning board, in all likelihood, working collaboratively to create this, these only changes that would be part of this master plan, and planning, better planning for the infrastructure needs of the area, to accommodate the potential growth of the area.
Any questions of John, or Casey?
I was just gonna add, we're kind of at a similar stage in that project as we are with the housing production plan, and we're working with the consultants to create an entirely new zoning district for that area, that would look at, you know, the existing buffer zones for residential and high-hazard uses, reducing or eliminating FAR, putting in incentives for lot consolidation, so unlocking a lot of different mechanisms to encourage redevelopment. We also got word that we received a Mass Works grant for five hundred and twenty-five thousand to advance the design of a potential pedestrian bridge from Anderson RTC to the New Boston-sized street of the tracks. So this will allow us to get up to fifteen, twenty percent design of a potential bridge that we can then package off and hand off to the MBTA to try to, you know, further pursue. So we're really excited about that, we just got word last week about that.
Walking Bridge?
Yes, the pedestrian bridge.
Over the, over the tracks?
It'd go right from the station to New Boston Street, instead of having to walk all the way around, so.
Okay.
That's some design funding only, but, decided to pursue that.
Well, that's real money, though.
Yeah.
It is.
Yes, Jen?
Casey, in regards to the pedestrian bridge you mentioned, is that just the MBTA's portion of it, there's a city involvement in it for that design component of it? Originally, that was supposed to be in the original transportation center, but with all this redevelopment, and now we have the revitalized bridge coming online hopefully next year, it'd be ideal if you come off ninety-three and a little bit into New Boston also, and go both north and south, as you cross over the tracks.
Yeah, that's certainly being explored, you know, as part of the RTC potential redevelopment, but the bridge funding, or the grant that we received is a state grant, and that's being given just to the city, we'll have to work in close collaboration of the MBTA and Mass Port, and everyone who's a stakeholder, but that'll be our project to get, to move forward in design.
All right, I mentioned it's only for, you know, your whole master planning for that area, and if it was to tie into New Boston Street, you know, the pedestrian bridge, oh, well, good, there's no parking there.
Yeah, that'll all be addressed in the design.
You might think there's no parking, there may be.
I know, land on it.
Casey's not in favor of that, but we might be able to come up with some parking space, right, Jeff?
Nevertheless, you know-
You mean, street parking?
Yes, go into the whole master plan. And that is a key success to that whole area, as we talked about, when it first got on the board, was Commerce Way was getting a circular loop for that whole roadway system. That would take care of most of that issue.
Will it have a moving sidewalk?
Maybe something, like a tram, maybe?
You just get on it, go.
And then they can fill in the ditch in the middle of the road, right?
All right, so the next meeting is scheduled for December ninth?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody's on board with that? All right, any other business? Seeing none? I will take a motion. Oh, the minutes, that's right, I'm, thank you, David. We need to do approval of minutes. From October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, eight-thirty, no. Motion by Dave to approve the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Talia, all those in favor? Six-zero carries. Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn by somebody at eight forty-eight.
So moved.
Claudia's not here, there's no one to make-
No, I was waiting for the police over here.
Motion by Dave, we'd be here for like, two weeks, a month, waiting for Claudia to come back so we could leave. Motion made by Dave to adjourn at eight, now it's, it's still eight forty-eight, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Talia, all those in favor? Six-zero carries. Thank you.